Joining me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, Dr. McCallum.
Good evening, and thank you for attending tonight's Olahtha Public Schools Board of Education meeting. Before we begin, we feel it's important to review the importance of conducting a productive and orderly meeting. This meeting is designated for the board to work with the superintendent and staff to conduct the work as outlined in the agenda. Please understand that patrons attending the meeting do so solely in an observatory role. Out of respect for everyone in attendance, we request that audience members do not speak, yell, or give applause during the meeting. This ensures the board, staff, and other attendees are able to listen and understand the business conducted. Anyone disrupting the meeting in any capacity will be asked to leave and may lose the opportunity to attend future meetings. Thank you again for attending, and we'll now proceed with the agenda.
Thank you, Dr. McCallum. Okay, on to adoption of agenda.
I'd like to, before we adopt the agenda, I'd like to propose three add-ins to the agenda. I think Jaeger was able to share some of those with y'all. If you hadn't seen it, read them out, but each separate and individual. The one, I'll just read it out to you if you'd like. So the first was, so there's an agenda which you guys have, you have a copy of it?
Okay, she already has a copy, so you don't need to read it.
Do you have the copy of the first one, the second one with revisions? Okay. Do you mean to read those to you, or do you just?
Sure.
So, I don't have access to our email in this. Computers, we're having to go bring it up on the phone, so I apologize. That's the second one I do have. I'm looking for the very first one.
You got it?
I got the second one, but the first one I was looking for.
Barb, do you have all?
You read the first one. That's a simple sentence.
That's the only one I've read.
Okay, do you want Barb, do you want Barb to just read it?
Yeah, did Brett, did you send the, originally, the other had agenda eight, one, two, and then three, and then the revisions?
Okay, we'll just have Ms. Bean read it then.
Okay, agenda item number one. The motion before the Olahtha Board of Education is to return consistency with OPS Board Policy BCBI as it was for many years from August 2011 until April 22, 2022. Be proposed that the Board Policy BCBI be adjusted to return to the line, "The general public shall be invited to attend all board meetings except executive sessions to the formal policy."
So the addition is a simple sentence that was removed somewhere in the month of April, but there's not on the BCBI in the Board Policy Adjustments, Changes, Modifications. There's no tracking that it was ever removed or modified and for what reason. So it's a simple sentence, but basically being enforced is that what's been there for eleven and a half years, which is an open invitation from the Board President, whoever that may be at any given time, to invite the general public to all board meetings except for executive sessions. So that's the first agenda item.
Do you want Barb to read the second, or do you have the second?
The second agenda item that was, was an agenda item that was an adjustment to BCBF, Board Policy BCBF, which is around organization and management of the board. And the adjustment for that was to add this line, "That any and all Olahtha Public School Board of Education meetings, except executive sessions," and I'll read it since Barb has a copy, but I'll read it to catch up for everybody, "within, except executive sessions within the USD 233 Education Center." And that means basically all those meetings that would be in this building, address 14160 South Blackbob Road, Olahtha, Kansas 6602, "or meetings held in any alternative school district building setting shall include audio slash video recordings of proceedings." Period. The exception, but not an exhaustive list, of when a BOE quorum may be presented and audio video recording may not be available include posted BOE training sessions that we would train, like we did back in January 10. Events such as the NSBA Convention, that was in San Diego, there was a quorum of you, but it really, didn't really actually have any meetings. KASB conferences, like the one last November, travel to Kansas State Legislative Events in Topeka, for instance, a bunch of us, several of us went in April, would have commented where it was posted, but we didn't have video. Travel to Kansas State Legislative Events, joint meetings with the Johnson County Board of Commissioners or Olahtha City Council. As an example, we had a meeting with the city council here, and it wasn't videotaped because that wasn't their protocol. So that's the adjustment, and that is to BCBF Board Policy. The third agenda item that I'd be ordered to discuss is proposed the Board Policy BCBI, which is School Board Operations Around Public Participation, that were first revised in August 2011, June 2020, September 2021, April 2022. And add this language to that order. Public participation is a valuable and necessary part of any public meeting. Having any and all constituents of the OPS District Number 233, teachers, staff, parents, guardians, students, and community taxpayers, engage and address the board members on behalf of themselves and able to represent various constituent groups in the area is essential to a truly public meeting of the Board of Education. Ensuring that the individuals and groups represented by those sharing public comments are heard, seen, and acknowledged within the full live-streamed general public meeting of the Board of Education is necessary to providing a diversified selection of voices, a fully inclusive school board meeting, and a fully equitable forum for all constituents of OPS Number 233. That's agenda item three.
So your motion is to adopt the agenda as presented with those three additions?
Precious.
We have a motion by Mr. Connell.
Second.
Let's take it by Mr. Kuhn.
Mrs. Felter?
No.
Mrs. Steele?
No.
Mr. Wickliffe?
No.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
No.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Motion fails four to three.
I would like to offer an alternative motion.
Okay.
Agenda item, let's frame it as that. The public comment portion of our meeting, I would like to refer that to committee, for us to work on it like we traditionally work on all issues prior to the pandemic, rather than create Board Policy organically from the dais. That's horrible practice, and we need to break ourselves of this habit. So I believe we should study the issue. I would like to see us return public comments to our regularly scheduled meeting, carve out space and livestream it, but I do not want to create policy from the bench. I want a committee to study that. I think, Dr. Jaeger, could you recommend a committee that could study this issue?
We don't need board action for that, do we?
To have a committee?
Do you have a committee?
No, not necessarily, no.
Okay.
But we do, and just for clarification, are you referring to a board committee, Mrs. Felter?
An existing committee, like normal business. And the reason why I'd like it added to the agenda is because there is interest within the community, and I just wanted us to have the dialogue, so there is an action plan. That some people have a sense of urgency for this. It's new that we've tried it in this format, but I had a hard time being here tonight on time, Brad did. And then when I was traveling in Norway, I couldn't see public comments because they aren't live streamed. It's up to you, your preference on if you want to add it to the agenda, or if you just want to talk about it at some point. That would be, I would like to see a shift from creating policy. I mean, what Brian has added here, it's alphabet soup. I have no idea what these policy intentions are, but we are a Board of Ed. We are the 30,000-foot perspective, and the assumption that we are hiding something is getting very old with me, and I want us to stop creating policy organically from the bench.
I would be 100% in favor of that.
Thank you.
Same.
So I have a quick question for you, because I was very clear that I itemized them as agenda items one, two, and three to be taken individually, and the board presented that as if it was a group of agenda items. And I'm not sure if I was clear enough, that I was very clear that I wanted them individually addressed, and you all voted on them as a group of one, two, and three. So.
Well, we voted to add them to the agenda. Not only, we didn't vote on those particular motions, we voted to add those motions to the agenda.
But could we not have voted for each individual? Wouldn't we be able to take them separately to vote?
The way I understand this, Mr. Connell, is when you make a motion, you make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented with the following changes. So if you say with the following change, and then you just read one, then we're done? Because we voted to, does that make sense?
Yeah, and so while I 100% concur with Ms. Felter, I find the timing suspect when the same concern could have been expressed last fall, last spring. We've made more adjustments to the public comment criteria in the last two years in the previous decade. It's clear that this group has made a common process of changing Board Policy in the meeting because it's happened. So I will support Ms. Felter's guidance, that we need to have a conversation, and it needs to be done, but this board really needs to have a conversation. We can't be having a committee that doesn't involve all of us. And so that's my concern about it, is that this is, we, last month, Ms. Steele quoted, stated that nobody had expressed any interest.
Mr. Connell, we're not going to, we're not going to start the debate here now.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that, say.
We're not going to do that now. We are not going to do that now. Okay? We are not going to do that now.
There's a lot of things you don't want to do, Joe, but this is an open forum. I was told this was a public meeting, or having a meeting.
We are not going to start shooting accusations at each other right now.
And you're out of order.
They're a fact.
Okay, so Ms. Felter, Ms. Felter had an idea. I think all of us on the board agree. I think we need to work with Dr. Jaeger, maybe in the three-by-threes, to figure out how that committee might be set up, whether it's who's in it and things like that. But I think we're all in agreement on that, and I am looking.
How about we vote on it, please, sir, President?
I don't think we need to vote on it. Do we need to vote on it?
It's not something that we need board action on. You put it to a committee, it delays it for three by threes for another 30 days, which means we don't get anything done until after the end of summer. These things matter now and have mattered through the spring.
They do matter. They do matter. So let's just put a timeline on it. It will, the committee will meet this month and bring a recommendation next month to the board, where we will have full discussion and rigorous debate.
I think for. I agree. I accept that. I think for. But that's how we all here.
That's how business is routinely conducted. As the longest current serving member on this board, I can tell you, we do not, in routine business, conduct business organically from the bench, other than in the pandemic. And that was very unprecedented circumstances, and we should not get in the habit of doing it. And so.
I appreciate you saying that, but in March, Shannon provided an agenda item that nobody read out loud before the board for us to be aware of until it came. It was a surprise agenda. So policy was changed on the fly without prior notice of anyone else.
Okay. Dr. Jaeger, you were going to say something?
I think I would like to have this be a motion and a vote, just so my staff and I are clear on what our direction is between now and the next board meeting, to make sure we meet the expectations of the board.
So then we need to add it as an agenda item?
So that would be my request, so there's clarity for me and our staff.
Yes, I'll make an agenda item. I would like to add to the agenda for June 2, 2022, an agenda item.
7.02.
7.02, public comment discussion.
Second.
Okay, motion by Ms. Felter, taken by Mr. Boyd.
Mrs. Steele?
No.
Mr. Wickliffe?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
All right, motion passes six to one. All right, and we are on to recognitions and awards.
Good evening. As we wrap up the 2122 school year, we wanted to showcase some more of our student and staff accomplishments. I'd like to take this moment to welcome all of our distinguished guests. We are going to begin our recognitions tonight with our generous community partner, Church of the Resurrection West. I'd like to ask Heather Schoonover from Community Development to come forward to assist with this recognition. And we'd also like to invite the following to come forward to be recognized. Pastor Bill Getford, West Mission Engagement Program Director Yolanda Byers, Fairview Elementary Partner Coordinator Vicki Holdman, Janet Oswald, Ridgeview Elementary Partner Coordinator, and also would like to invite Ridgeview Elementary Principal Kim Thorpe, Ridgeview Elementary Administrative Assistant Chris Stevenson, and Fairview Elementary Administrative Assistant Carrie Dean to come forward. Church of the Resurrection West is an adopted school partner that currently partners with Fairview and Ridgeview Elementary Schools. During the 2122 school year, Church of the Resurrection West partnered with Fairview on several projects, including holiday and spring break activity bags for students that included snacks, books, games, toys, and craft kits. The church provided support for Fairview families facing economic challenges by providing Thanksgiving and holiday resources. They collected and distributed winter coats, began back snacks, and COVID meals as well. The church also partnered with Ridgeview on many of the same projects, and in addition to supporting the needs of specific students and families, the church focused on teacher appreciation efforts, providing snacks and treats, financially supporting field trips, and hosting monthly author visits at the schools, while bringing the bookmobile to the school for students to choose two books to take home. We are honored to have Church of the Resurrection West as a dedicated partner to Olahtha Public Schools. Thank you for all that you do. Thank you again. Next, we'd like to recognize the Olahtha Northwest Ravens Dance Team. They were represented tonight by assistant coach Mackenzie Miss Pegel and 2122 senior captains Brooke Mason and Ali Shmoida. If you could come forward along with Principal Chris Suck. Did I say it right? Shmoida, did I say? The Ravens Dance Team competed in the National Dance Alliance National Championship in March in Orlando, Florida. The team won the national championship in team performance, game day, and jazz. The team currently holds four grand national championship titles. The rest of the team and their head coach, Shannon Store, couldn't be here tonight, but we also want to send them our congratulations as well. And congratulations to you. And are your families here tonight? We'd love for them to stand and be recognized if they are. Congratulations again. Thank you. Next, I'd like to invite the California Trail Middle School Math Counts Team of Biswandu Bulawana, Garrett Lee, Ariel Lee, and Mahi Kohli to come forward, along with Principal Mike Wiley and Coach Mary Rosworm. The California Trail Team placed first in the state math counts competition. This is the first time in school history. And additionally, Mahi, if you could raise your hand, placed first in the state and was one of 224 math leads to compete in the national math counts competition last month in Washington, DC, where Mrs. Rosworm was the coach of the Kansas team. Congratulations to you all. And I know your families are here. We want them to stand to be recognized tonight. And come on up and get a photo, if you want to come and get a photo quick. You're welcome too. Congratulations again. Okay, and finally, tonight, I'd like to welcome Olahtha West High School's Social Studies teacher, Andy Weber, to come forward, along with Principal Jane O'Jack. Andy was named the Claus Nobel Educator of Distinction by the National Society of High School Scholars. The NSHSS considers educators of distinction to be outstanding role models and exemplary practitioners who have made a lasting difference in a student's life by encouraging them to strive for excellence, not just in their academic pursuits, but also in their other endeavors. Andy, as an educator of distinction, is eligible to compete for the NSHSS Educator of the Year Award. So congratulations to you. And that concludes our recognitions tonight.
All right, and Maggie, you're up again.
It's me again.
Staff and parent survey.
Good evening once again. I'm thrilled to be here to talk a little bit about our district staff and parent surveys. These surveys were sent to parents and staff in February and March of this year. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about the results. So first and foremost, why do we send out surveys? We know that gaining the feedback and input from our staff and families is vitally important, and this input that we receive helps guide decision-making throughout the year. So we receive input in a variety of ways. Our teachers and our principals on a daily basis interact with our stakeholders, and we receive input and feedback that way. We also have this annual survey. We have social media direct messages that we receive information from staff and parents. Throughout the year, we send out thought exchange surveys to both staff and parents on a variety of topics. We will often put together specific project or event feedback forms. The district has a communications email address that all of our district messages go out from. It's communications@olahthaschools.org, and we receive a lot of questions and feedback that way. And then we also receive feedback from the main district website. We have a contact us website link where people send in information there as well. So let's talk about the parent survey results. We had more than 2,500 parents who responded to the survey. And these parents were representative of all three levels in our district. Many of these parents have students in multiple buildings, and every building was represented by the survey. So some points of pride for us. 85% of parent respondents said that they were satisfied with the learning opportunities provided to parents. And 76% responded that they agree or strongly agree that the district provides good value for taxpayer dollars. Additionally, 77% said that leadership at their child's school is effective. Other points of pride on the parent survey, 85% said their child has a high-quality and effective teacher, which is wonderful. And then 80% of parent respondents agreed or strongly agreed that the Olahtha Public Schools provides safe and secure learning environments. Some opportunities for growth for us. What I think is really interesting about these three particular questions is not necessarily just in the percentage of parents who responded that they agree or strongly agree, or parents that they responded that they disagree or strongly disagree. What's really interesting about these particular questions, and I think provide us great opportunity, is in the parents who responded neutrally to these questions. So on the first question, the district is preparing students for success after high school. 67% of parents who responded to the survey agreed or strongly agreed with that statement. We had 23% who responded neutrally. When I saw this information, I thought it was really interesting, because I felt like many of those parents, maybe some parents who have younger kids in the system, and just haven't seen yet all the ways that the district prepares kids for career and for college after graduation. The other thing that was interesting, the parent, the district provides high-quality social-emotional learning. 66% of our parent respondents agreed or strongly agreed, and 23% were neutral. Again, and perhaps an opportunity to share more about what our social-emotional learning is in the district and how it, you know, how it's presented in our system. And then finally, the district provides quality mental health services. 58% of our parents agreed or strongly agreed. But the really interesting thing about this response was that 32% marked neutral. So those may be parents who have never accessed our mental health services for their children. So in a time when mental health is a topic across our nation, this may be a great opportunity to share more with our parents about the services that we offer to our families. So now on to the staff survey. We had more than 1,900 staff who responded to this survey. The majority of the staff who responded were certified staff, teaching license staff at 71%. 29% were classified or non-teaching staff. And the staff responded from all levels, and all buildings were represented. Some points of pride for us. 73% of the staff who responded were satisfied or very satisfied with their job. Again, 17% marked neutral. 74% said that they were proud to work in the Olahtha Public Schools, and 71% said that diversity, engagement, and inclusion were valued in the district. Some areas, opportunities of growth for us. 58% of the respondents said the district hires and retains high-quality staff. This is an area that we are constantly looking at and working at as a system. It's one of our strategic plan goals. It's something our human resources department is constantly working on daily. So this will be something that we'll continue to focus on moving forward. 65% of staff respondents said that they have the resources and support to do their jobs. Is this something that our senior leadership team will be looking at moving forward as well, kind of work on this particular issue that has come up? And then 48% of staff said that the district provides high-quality mental health resources and support to staff. And again, we had 36% who marked neutral. So again, another opportunity, I think, for us to share with staff and with parents the amazing resources that we have in our system. This is my favorite slide of the entire presentation. From the communications perspective, we asked both staff and parents to respond to the question, I get the information I need from the Olahtha Public Schools, and 92% of parents agreed or strongly agreed with that statement, and 91% of staff who took the survey agreed or strongly agreed with that statement. So this is very exciting, because we want to make sure that our staff and our parents get the information that they need, but we also wanted to drill down a little or two, to make sure that we understood where exactly these groups are seeking information from. So these are the top three areas for both parents and staff. On the parent side, they said that the emails from their child's school first was number one, where they get their information, the district email, and then their child's teacher. And on the staff side, it was district email, and then supervisor email, and then the district website. The other thing I wanted to point out is that this year, we started two new communication pieces. OPS Insider is a parent newsletter that goes out monthly, and OPS In The Know is a staff newsletter that goes out to staff weekly. And both of these publications, in their first year, ranked very, very highly on the survey, both ranked in the top five, which I thought was great for debut publications in their first year.
Maggie, not to interrupt you, but the communications piece, in terms of that being 92 and 91%, we asked a question like that in the past. What was the highest that was on past surveys approximately?
It was in the eighties in the past, mid-eighties.
Yeah, I think it's the highest we've seen, at least since I've been in the district, which is great.
Great.
Maggie would give the communications team a kudos since she's doing the presentation.
I am lucky to work with the greatest communications people ever, so yay, my communications crew. Okay, so next steps. We had, we asked on both the parent and staff survey for parents and staff to leave comments for us. We had about 700 from parents and 500 from staff. And so senior leadership will be studying all of the results and looking deeply into the comments this summer and moving forward as we guide decision-making in the coming weeks and months and years. School-specific information will be shared with principals. And then we're going to continue to survey staff and parents each winter with this annual survey to make sure that we constantly have a pulse of what's happening in our system. And then we'll also continue to use our other feedback tools. So we're going to continue to focus on that to make sure that we have all the information that we need moving forward. So that being said, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Oh, sorry, Joe.
No, go ahead.
I was just going to add a couple of things. Maggie, would you go to the slide that has, I brought it work for the Alatha Public School District?
Yep. It's in the.
Oh, it's the second one. Okay, yeah. You know, that one is 74%. And I will tell you, that's probably down about 20% than what it has been in the past. And, you know, as Maggie and I were reviewing this presentation yesterday and thinking about it, and when I first saw the survey results, honestly, I was pretty upset about it in terms of, gosh, what's, what's going on with this? But, you know, I think it's an opportunity for us to stop and also pause about the role of public education in general a little bit. You know, when, when we share a survey like this and the information in a survey like this, I think a lot of times we turn to, you know, district administration, our principals, the Board of Education, us all as a group to figure out how we make that better. And I will tell you that it's a national problem that I hope we can solve in Alatha and be the leaders on. You know, the narrative around public education is very challenging. There's not a district anywhere that's not seeing people leave in larger numbers than they have. You know, I had the opportunity last week to participate in a chamber meeting where local university presidents were there, talking about the dwindling enrollment, their colleges of education, to the point that even how they're going to keep them open, those kinds of pieces. And so, you know, I think we would be remiss as an organization, first, to say, what can we do to encourage this and to help this, because that's important to us in Alatha. Beyond that, as an organization, how do we encourage our community to take our staff? Because it's not just the Board of Education. It's not just administration. It is a community that has a strong history in supporting public education and what that looks like, that I think it's going to take all of us, all of us, for that number to be where it once was, where people are really proud to be part of this district, but also proud to be a part of this community. And that's, and that's a really important thing, I think, for us as a community to think about and what are the steps that we can take. You know, I've said a couple of times this year that, you know, we're never going to agree on everything. Boy, the last two years has taught us that, hasn't it? But if, if we don't take the current opportunity to really figure out how we come around and support our schools, support our staff, support our employees to be part of this community, I'm worried about that. And I'm not the only one worried about that. I mean, again, the college presidents who, who I sat and listened to talking about college of education and things is, you know, I think we have the opportunity to maybe be the leader in trying to get that back together because it's happening everywhere. But I think, you know, while that's a point of pride, it's still the lowest it's probably ever been in our district. And it's incumbent on all of us, I think, to try to figure out how we improve that. So I just didn't want to let that moment pass without saying that. Sorry, Maggie.
That's great. Thank you.
Okay, questions?
Thank you. Maggie, thank you for this. Will you send the comments to the board as well? Traditionally, we receive those. Every week, we get the report of the share of voice. And the share of voice is on social media, the impressions. It's determined by social media, traditional media mentions. And Alatha Public Schools, of the big three in Johnson County, we, we always are leading in the percentage by double digits, aren't we? So I think that you're seeing it reflected in the communications numbers there. So I want to thank you for that. You've done the app on, you know, you've knocked on every door to try to get the word out and still there's opportunities to communicate. And so especially like the pathways after graduation for success. I do think younger families have no idea. I remember back then. What? What is crew tech, huh? And so I love looking at kind of our SWOT, the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities. And just like in Alatha, the east-west traffic congestion, that's our opportunity for excellence. We're going to have to invest there. I really would like to see Alatha. I think we have the right foundation and framework in place, the right people. I mean, we have teachers like Megan Bricks who teaches these little humans to sing these most beautiful songs. And she can inspire those kids to become teachers in Alatha. So that number, I project that we're going to see it get better every year. And it's going to take all of us and how we think of one another and do we give grace to one another or do we assume the worst? I mean, the pandemic has been traumatizing for everyone. Let's just be mindful of how we interact with each other. And this number is a great indicator. I'm off mic. Pulpit there, sorry. Thank you, Maggie.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
I'd like to ask a question of clarity, clarification if I could. So in communications, 92% of parents said, agreed, strongly agreed, they're getting the information I need from public schools. And 91% of staff. But in the surveys, they're, the neutral commentaries, your commentary was that maybe they just don't know. So one of the questions that I have is if they think they're getting all the information, is it the depth of information? Is it enough of that type of information? Is that what you're kind of alluding to, is that maybe they don't know how broad and deep that we do these things in, so they're neutral that way? Is that what you're kind of mentioning?
Yeah. And basically, I felt like the survey gave us this awesome opportunity to get little windows into where they might need some additional information. So it was really exciting for us as a team to see that people feel like they're getting the information they need. But we also saw that there are areas that we could strengthen and maybe share more things. And so that was really exciting because it gave concrete places where us to focus and put our work and efforts.
Yeah. And I think too, that oftentimes, having done a bunch of surveys, have participated and written mini-surveys, I think sometimes you get neutral answers when you don't know what you don't know, right? And so this tells us where there might be some spots where people just don't know what they don't know. So I appreciate that.
Since I'm on the communications committee with you, one of the things that you've talked about is that we have 30,000 pages of information. But I would, I think that one of the things is in the surveys, even get them, you know, as you ask questions, you have, but even embedding some links, you know, in the marketing communications where you talk about is like, you can't give them everything because it's too much. But if you give them access and if they so choose to click through, that's one of the things that I know you've talked about as part of the plan coming forward this new year with refab, rework is keeping those newsletters short, giving them those links to encourage them to reach out. And I think that's part of what you've been working towards. You told us, as you've been working towards is how to make it shorten up the openness, but still give them those links. So I see that as an opportunity that when we see the survey next year, is that the plan that you put in place. So Maggie's, we've on the communication, has a tremendous communication plan established and working on embedding out that is, was pretty impressive to see. And I expect that that's going to have a significant impact on those neutrals where the, I just don't know, right? So I wanted to make sure I, because what you can't do is say, hey, I'm on the community and I'm doing these things, we're doing these things. But I can, that there is a model, there is a structure that is going to make. So, because you could look at these as negative, but you look at them as an opportunity to grow. And I think that's, so I want to make sure you knew that I heard you when we spoke last week.
Thank you. I appreciate that. No, that's great. Thank you. Appreciate that.
I have a question. In terms of participation, the 71%, from an industry perspective, is that a good percentage? Or do we need to try to increase that participation rate?
So it wasn't 71%. It was 71% of the respondents were teachers. So it wasn't 71% of all teachers. It was 71% of respondents were teachers. But we had about almost 2,000 staff participate. I think that's well over industry standard because that's, you know, almost half of our staff were participating in the survey, which I think is pretty great. I don't have the exact number, but I know that that's well above it. So.
Typically, to conduct formal research, you need about 30% of respondents on the survey. I'm looking for people who are much smarter than I am in the room. They're going like this, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, thank you very much.
Onto our next presentation, Learning Service Update.
Dr. G looks like she has half the room here with her tonight. This is going to be good.
And they all stood up in unison?
They did. That's impressive.
Good evening. I have the opportunity to work daily with this amazing staff right here at the Learning Services Department. I tell you what, I would not have been able to transition without their guidance and support. So I feel very blessed to be able to work alongside them every day. I know that Mr. Boyd, Mr. Connell, and Ms. Steele have been a part of our Learning Services Committee and have gotten a glimpse over the next two presentations. But we wanted to provide you with a better overview of our new implementation for Fast Bridge. So the purpose of this presentation is to provide the Board of Education with information on the Fast Bridge Assessment Platform. As you know, our district has proposed adopting Fast Bridge as a screening tool and general outcome measure for reading, math, and behavior beginning in fall of 2022. Our goal tonight is that this presentation will provide you with an overview of the platform and information obtained from eight of our schools that we used as early adopters to help as we get ready to implement and roll this out. I think one of the key parts, if when you're implementing a new program, knowing is that we want to make sure that the people that matter most, along with our students, are the ones that are going to have to really roll this out, and that is our staff, our teachers. And so one of the things that we've been very intentional is to make sure that we have information and input from our teachers. So this amazing staff here have met several times as a team and also with teachers and buildings to make sure that we gain input on what's the best way to roll this out so that it is successful and so that we're able to provide the support that our buildings and the teachers will need to make sure that this is successful. As part of that, we'll ask for eight of our schools from each level to be a part of our early adopter group. And so this spring, they were able to actually roll this out, use it, and provide some feedback. So I'm going to let the experts here share the information on Fast Bridge. So tonight with us, we have Spencer Brown, who is our Coordinator of Mathematics and anything else that we ask him to do. We always say other duties as assigned. We have Kim Dahl, who is our Coordinator of English Language Arts Secondary. We have Michael Flanthrope, who is the brain of everything. He is our ELL Coordinator and does anything and everything we ask him to do. We have Maggie Richardson, who is our Elementary ELA Coordinator. And then Scott Fluke, Dr. Scott Fluke, who keeps us all in mental check. He takes care of our PBIS coordinators. And then we have Andrew Heinecke, who helps us when we need. He is our Special Education Expert in our group. So without further ado, I'm going to let them kick it off.
All right, good evening. If we do our job this evening, our goal is that you'll have a better understanding through this overview of where we're proposing Fast Bridge would fit within our system. Some specificity around what it would be replacing and not just those assessments, but what we would be looking to Fast Bridge, what information we would want it providing us about our students. And then we also will look into some of the advantages of the, of transitioning to the system. But before we go in too far, we like to use an analogy around any assessment and instruction educational system. It's not so different from that of just a healthy lifestyle. And so when you think about a healthy lifestyle and the assessments that you undergo in a healthy lifestyle, these, these pictures on the screen probably look fairly familiar. A healthy lifestyle begins with a appropriate amount of exercise and diet. But even with a healthy lifestyle, we have to go into the doctor for a checkup. And this is the role of a universal screening or a universal screener in an educational system. It's a quick measure to say, hey, are there concerns? Right? I walk into the doctor's office, they're going to take my blood pressure, they're going to look in my ears, look in my nose, and hopefully send me on my way and leave the needles put away. However, if there are concerns, they have the expertise to be able to move into some diagnostics to say, hey, what is going on here? Why is this blood pressure rising? And if they happen to find a concern, like the example on the screen with diabetes, hopefully they can provide me something that I can be progress monitoring and checking on, on myself to make sure that I'm remaining in that healthy range. So this is really the job of Fast Bridge. It really falls in the columns of universal screening and progress monitoring. It's a quick check, much like that of a growth measure. Those of you who have kids and you're used to seeing these, right? It's that quick check to say, is, is my student progressing in the areas of math, reading, and behavior in the way that is healthy and one that we would expect? And when it's not, we need to be ready to follow up. But it's a quick measure so that we don't spend a lot of time missing out on instruction, but that we can get that measure quickly and we can move forward. And so the proposal would be with the discontinuation of NWE MAP that we're used to using as that general outcome measure for reading and math. It was that general outcome measure that said, hey, in general, how is your fifth-grade student doing in his mathematics compared to like peers, other fifth-grade students across the nation? Or in, or in your broad reading ability, how are you doing compared to peers? It would be replacing AMIRA, which we use this year to check on students' oral reading fluency, how fast is a student reading, as well as what is their accuracy rate? And it would be replacing PANARMA, which is that Behavior, Social, Emotional Learning Survey that our students complete right now. And so all of this would fall under one house, and that's within Fast Bridge. One of the biggest changes is, or I apologize, I'm getting ahead of myself. Some of the advantages of doing this is a reduced assessment time. This was a huge advantage that we saw this spring with the early implementers. Some of the teachers were real thrilled about how much time they got back when the assessment now took about 30 minutes in math and reading respectively. It all lives in one single platform. So if I as a teacher want to look at the whole child, I don't have to bounce around to multiple platforms to see how the student is doing in the different areas. One huge advantage is it does provide us an opportunity for normative monitoring, so much like that growth chart that we showed you. I can check in on a student's normative progress, which by normative, I just mean what is that percentile of that student? I don't have to just do it three times a year. So if you're familiar with MAP, we've always done a fall screening, a winter screening, and a spring screening to say, what's, what is, what percentile is our student at? Fast Bridge has the opportunity to give us some tools where we can check in on those percentiles in between. So I don't just find an alarm in the fall screening, go try an intervention and hold my breath and hope that winter comes back better. I can be checking in more frequently to say, am I actually closing the gap with your peers in terms of your computation or in terms of your oral read fluency? It's a significantly reduced cost and it aligns very well with our MTSS structures. And that's the part that we're really going to lean into this evening. Because anytime we talk about an assessment footprint, we have to talk about, well, what do we even need from assessments? Anytime you are providing assessments that you're not able to respond to, it's likely that you're now in a space of over-assessing. And so we want to make sure that our assessments are efficient and they're specific to what we need for our MTSS structures. And MTSS, if you're unfamiliar with that term, is multi-tiered system of supports. And so that is simply a reference to making sure that we're honoring the complexity of our students and the different levels of needs they have, whether those be, whether that be needs for enrichment or need for intervention, we have to have structures in place to provide what students need. The biggest shift is a move away from NWA MAP. This is a system that our district has known and trusted for some time now. And it's important to pause and think about some of the similarities between these two assessments. First of all, they're designed very similar in construct. They're both designed to give you a percentile. Now, NWA MAP has a RIT score. That is a score that they use to quantify student growth, but that RIT score comes back to just a percentile. If I scored 213, you scored 213, we're going to have the same percentile. And that's what tells me how I'm doing compared to my peers. Fast Bridge is going to do the same thing. They're going to have a scaled score from an adaptive measure, and then they're also going to give you a percentile, say, how is this, how is the student performing compared to their peers across the nation? One addition that will be a learning curve for the system is the reference to risk levels. And so in Fast Bridge, it's going to tag any student between the 15th percentile and 40th percentile with the vocabulary of some risk. And that can be alarming. But it is meant to be an at-risk screener, and so it's meant to be very sensitive. It's meant to say, if there is any concern at all with this student, follow up and make sure everything's okay. I had the opportunity to have conversations with some parents after early implementation, and some were a little alarmed because they said, hey, this, this percentile appears to be low based on what you said these risk levels are. And to be able to have the conversation to say, your student might get fantastic grades and reading might still be hard. And if that's the case, we want to catch those kids and we want to make it less hard. And so it's another way to look to just say, hey, if there's any level of risk, let's just do some follow-up and make sure we're okay. It's going to be oversensitive and it's going to flag some kids to say, there might be risk, and there's not risk. And well, those diagnostics will shake that out and we'll feel comfortable with it, with the core providing the appropriate amount of instruction for that student. So anytime we look at any assessment footprint, the two questions we want to make sure we answer are what models, first of all, do we trust in teaching and learning? Dylan Williams has a fantastic quote where he says, "There's no such thing as a valid test. There are only valid and invalid interpretations." And I love that quote because it really And I love that quote because it really gets to the simplicity of assessment. And so when we think about that quote and we say, okay, if there's only such thing as valid interpretations, what interpretations do we need as a system to feel confident in our students' reading ability and our students' math abilities and feel confident in what we're doing in response? And so I'm gonna pass this off to Kim Dahl as she begins to talk about what are those reading models that we know and trust and how does this play into those models?
So as Spencer said, what is that model? And this is a theoretical model that we lean on quite heavily in the literacy world. It's called Scarborough's Reading Rope. We often just refer to it as the rope. And you can see what it does is it takes the complex nature of reading and it breaks it down into more discrete skills that it takes to get to a skilled reader. And all in the metaphor, which is great for literacy people, like we like the metaphor, that strong rope takes all of those pieces to be strong at the same time. And so we have the skilled reading at the end. The bottom half of the rope is what we would consider some finite skills. Those are our foundational skills, the phonological awareness, the decoding, those types of things. They're gonna cap out. Like, we need our kids to know those things, and that's what our 95% group phonics core instruction that we just adopted at the elementary level is meant to explicitly instruct on is that word recognition. The top half of the rope is more infinite skills. Our vocabulary is always growing. Our background knowledge is always growing. And so as we continue to grow those pieces and strengthen those parts of the rope all along the way, we get to that skilled reading. So back to that initial question, then going back to that second question is, how does our assessment footprint fit this theoretical model that we're using on a regular basis? So you can see we've kind of just overlaid the things that we've been doing. In the past, at that skilled reading level, we were using MAP. Now we're going to just simply shift it to FastBridge and say, okay, do we have skilled readers here? I'm gonna skip the middle section and actually go and speak to that phonological and phonics inventory. So what happens is if there is some risk, right, for a student, if that comes up in the FastBridge, we're gonna do some diagnostics and take a look and a deeper dive to see what it is that we need to strengthen, what part, what strands of the rope do we need to strengthen? And we're gonna start at that phonological and phonics piece. The oral reading fluency kind of serves a dual purpose, and so that's what this slide is about. We have the screening and the normative monitoring. So the oral reading fluency is our normative monitoring measure. In other words, we have national standards or norms for a traditionally progressing student, fall, winter, and spring at most like K8. The researchers are still working on 912, but we can still rely on that K8 quite a bit. And so we will lean into that when we're in between the times that we're giving FastBridge because we can use that oral reading fluency not just at fall, winter, and spring. We can do that more regularly. So our mastery monitoring is this student needs help on the short vowel sound. So we're going to teach the short vowel sound to that student, and then we're going to assess on the short vowel sound, did they master that skill? Ultimately, our goal is to answer a couple of questions. Is the student learning what we're teaching them, that short vowel sound? But we also have to make sure that we're answering the question, is the student learning and growing enough to close any gap that was there in the first place? And that's what the oral reading fluency and FastBridge will help us do. So I'm gonna turn it back over to Spencer so he can overlay that with MAP.
Yes, so in math, we have a very similar process. We know where we want students to be broadly. This is the fifth grade standard clusters that lead towards algebra. And so these would be the ones that you always want to provide your most rigorous instruction around, maybe is how to say that. But those are certainly the ones that we weigh heavily when we consider a successful fifth grader. But when a student does not appear to be successful, we have to have diagnostics. And so in Olathe, we have progression maps that will actually take any of our priority standards and line them up to say, okay, how do they actually compare to one another? And we will do diagnostic assessments along these progressions to say, okay, in terms of place value, where is this student's understanding? Let's intervene on that, and then let's continue to come back to say, are you closing the gap with your peers? So once again, our mastery and diagnostic pieces fall to the left with other systems that we already have in place. The screening and normative monitoring saying, okay, what we're doing in those interventions, with those target interventions, are they closing the gap with your peers? That falls to the FastBridge side.
Good evening, everybody. I'm being happy to share a little bit of information about the behavior screening component of FastBridge. FastBridge uses a screener called MySavers. That's the instrument that students would complete. And in the interest of transparency, we thought we would go ahead and provide all of the items on that screener so that everybody can see exactly what questions the students would be answering. So you can see that MySavers is divided into three distinct subscales, the first of which is social behavior, which is looking at essentially how well you're able to respect your peers, how challenges you may have with disruptions, argument, being argumentative or anything like that. Academic behavior, which is essentially your ability to engage in school. So arriving on class, on time, turning in work, being ready to go. And then emotional behavior, which gets at those concerns that often we miss when we're just observing students in class, like feeling sad or anxious or feeling drawn. I'm also happy to share some information about our early adopters and our plans to implement this and train our staff to be able to use the system. First, a major thank you to the schools you see on the screen here who put in a lot of work to get some early data for us and to help us work out some bugs and what this might look like. So I really appreciate the staff for their support in this area and these buildings. We also met with hundreds of staff members representing every single school building to get feedback on what they would like this initiative to, this implementation to look like. And you'll see here that the feedback from our teachers is maybe we should roll this platform out just like we would teach our children in small chunks with good expert-level instruction, getting lots of time to process and practice and get hands-on learning. So that's what we intend to do is to follow this feedback that our staff gave us and use that to guide our plans for how we would roll this out to buildings. And to provide just a little more detail on that, our intention is to train experts in every building. So we would identify the administrator, a teacher, to school counselor, and then our MTSS support specialists and our instructional coaches in the system, and then have them develop an individualized training plan for their building to meet the specific needs of their building. The goal is to provide just-in-time, phased training so we provide a little bit of information on the component that staff are just about to use so that they can learn that skill, practice on it, get some feedback on it, rather than all at once upfront, as sometimes has caused concerns in the past. And with that, we're able to take any questions from the board.
Questions?
I have a quick question for you. In past meetings, we were, the district had established new criteria around the strategic plan and it was PANARMA MAPs and stuff. Have we been able to take all of this and remap it to the new strategic plan, the new accountability plan? Can you talk to that a little bit?
Are you referring to the balanced scorecard?
Yeah, balanced scorecard. To present several months ago, right, maybe about the time, and maybe it was developed along with expecting FastBridge to come? I'm just curious how it overlaps.
That's a good question. That's a good question. The scorecard, my understanding is most of the items on there are using our existing measures. And so it would be a need to adapt that scorecard to reflect the data reflecting.
Yeah, there's a couple of areas like that, Mr. Connell, but a lot of them were written based on proficiency numbers and things like that. You know, kids reading on level, those sorts of things. Because sometimes our choice, sometimes not our choice, our assessments change. And so we knew we probably need some fluidity with that. I'm looking at Tim for verification, though.
Some of our old goals had to do with our assessment as well. Some of our assessments are also built around our Kansas assessment, which haven't changed. These are just some of the measures and data points that we keep along the way as well. So one of the things this team's gonna get the opportunity to do is to work with me a little bit in terms of kind of looking at our current data points that are on our scorecard and our upcoming, our new data points and looking for some correlations. That's the benefit of having some early adopters this year is that we can get a little bit of a jumpstart on that. And that will also shape some of our five-year targets moving forward.
Another question that we talked to you about in the Learning Services Group, which was, but I'm gonna ask it out loud so that everyone can hear that, is right, is that this isn't a perfect alignment with, because it's a singular platform to three distinct and siloed platforms. There will be some things that look different when parents get the materials, when teachers get the materials. Can you talk a little bit to how we as a district are gonna help prepare the parents? Or when they get the reports and how to read it and how to prepare and understand it? Because it's one thing to teach teachers, supporting the teachers when they're in that description as well.
I appreciate you asking that, Brian, because that was something, you're correct, that we talked about. You know, coming right out of the building, in just a couple of years as a building principal, that was something that was really important because we do roll out these things. And we have to train our teachers to be able to talk to the report and understand the report because educating our parents means we need to educate our teachers so that they understand it. And so one of the things that we're being very, very mindful of and intentional of is to make sure that we're not just going to, when you talked about Johnkin and helping them along the way, is we're not just gonna roll this out and tell teachers, here's the report. We need to make sure that we're educating them and saying, this is what the report reads. This is the significance. This is what we need to share with parents. And this is the report we need to look at. And so being able during our trainings to be able to have that discussion with teachers and help them along the way, not only teachers, administrators. It's important that they have that, not only administrators, general administration so that they can be able to help support building principals as well because it's not just a learning services initiative. It's everybody being able to do this. So with that said, you know, when we're talking to parents is providing them that support so that they can see, I'm now going to see, as Spencer mentioned, high risk, some risk. I didn't see that before in MAP. My child was a straight A student. My child was not having that. And now all of a sudden, the first thing I'm gonna read is, my child has some risk. So helping them to understand, one, the terminology and the change in that, and two, what that indicates. Exactly what Spencer shared today was being able for them to understand that this is designed to be an at-risk tool, right? So we need to be aware and mindful of anything so that we can be able to say, wow, there may be a problem and not wait until, oh, now we're at the higher percentile, so there's a concern. If there's a little bit, we should be checking it constantly. So to answer your question in a nutshell is, yes, we're going to make sure that our teachers have the understanding of the reports. By having early implementers, we actually were able to send a report home to parents, and those are the phone calls that Spencer has been taking to answer those. You know, the great thing about having an early implementer group is when we came together at the end, there were some concerns from our building principals as well. I now have to send this out at the end of the year with parents. I'm an early implementer, and there's gonna be concerns, and we're not ready to talk at that. You shouldn't be ready. That's why we're having an early implementer. And so being able, but learning from it, hearing input from our principals, we were able to go back and provide that communication to the early implemented parents and then also saying, phone calls come to us, us being our team here, so that we can be able to help guide them. And those questions that parents are asking our group, we're taking note because when that time comes, as we're training our teachers, is if you're asked this question, this is how you need to answer it, or these are questions that have come to us that that has helped us as well, so that we can help prepare our teachers.
I would say too, you know, one of the things in terms of what Dr. G just described is really the system working at its best, where we have early adopters, schools that are willing to come on and do something as an early adopter, interfacing with our Learning Services team, providing feedback, looking at communication, and helping adjust it so it hits the right balance and the right spot for the rest of the system. And, you know, that's one of the things I'm really proud of that this team has done is really methodically worked with those early adopters to make sure that we're hitting it. I got copied on a couple of emails from a couple of teachers who, you know, initially saw a letter that was gonna go home, and they said, oh, oh, just wait a second. And I was just copying on it, but this team very quickly got with them, said, okay, where are the concerns? What are the bumps? And really, it was just out of trying to make sure it was clear for parents what was coming home and those kinds of things. So it's really a, it's really demonstration of when the system works like it's supposed to. So a lot of work on these guys' behalf.
I'm gonna call one out. The thing that we talked about over the last two or three months for the meetings especially was that with the learning loss of the last couple of years, we can't be reactive anymore. This movement, this shift of a platform that gives us all the knowledge, allows us to, as Spencer even alluded to, is look at the norm of things along the way. Wait, we have to be proactive. We have to be more assertive. We have to use the MTSS people when we have, when we have to. And this is one of the things we've talked extensively about, Dr. G, is putting ourselves on the front end. Yes, the numbers may look that their kids are struggling, but a lot of kids are struggling. So let's know it, then we can do something about it. But waiting till the end of the school year or a whole quarter later isn't acceptable to you? I mean, that's one of the things you said, it's not acceptable to my team to wait. We need to know along the way. We need each of those children, and what do we do? Right? So I want to make sure I call that out because that was something you guys just spent a lot of time talking to us and our committee about, is we need to go find those kids where they are and recognize them, have the interventions that the MTSS and the programs you put in place the last year or so have been really about targeting those, then measure it sooner, I think Spencer mentioned, sooner, not hoping in the winter, right? And so that's where my take backs from our conversations was like, okay, we're not gonna sit back. We're gonna be jumping out there. And parents be patient with us because your kids may get flagged. But we can do something about it when we know. And that's what you've talked, what we've talked about with you, Dr. Hears, when we know we can do something, but we don't know, we don't know. So I thought that was a really good theme over the last couple of months of meeting with Kim and Spencer and your team is that this is where we're gonna get. And that's important. I don't want people to be afraid of the testing. You have to recognize that it's a growing, evolving platform. The knowledge will evolve over the course of next year as well, right?
Thank you.
But thank you for that.
I've got a question. Spencer, so the, thank you, team, great presentation. The normative monitoring, the early adapters, how frequent, frequently were they doing this? Did you?
Yeah, so we didn't do the progress monitoring side of FastBridge with them. We just did the screening side to just get a sense of how that was gonna go and just the assessment footprint that the screening was gonna carry. So that's something we're working towards for next fall is thinking through, okay, what would the frequency be that we would want to progress monitor a student who does come back at risk?
How about just the average student? Do you have an ideal timeframe that you would recommend to all of our schools for progress monitoring?
Yes, so given that it's an at-risk screener, it's very much during the screening, we're talking that blood pressure, ear check, eye check. If a student doesn't flag at risk, there's no sense in needing to make him come back every two weeks to see how they're doing. Students who are at risk, that's the timeframe that we need to think about. Okay, if these are the interventions we're providing, what would be the appropriate amount of time between these screenings that we could expect to see some sort of impact in a normative sense? And so something like math computation would be more sensitive than a general measure. And so math computation may be something that we would be normative monitoring more, more often than maybe a concepts and applications type assessment. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And so because it's an ASGRI, at-risk sensitivity test, if someone's exceptional and bored, will it pick up on that as well or no?
The great part of it is it lasts about 30 minutes. So we get through it pretty quickly. We've actually had feedback from students as well that they're like, oh, this was great. This was a much different assessment than what I'm used to having to take, but it is still adaptive. And so it's gonna push a kid to higher levels if they're answering everything right. And so we hope that we get to a space that there are a challenge so that we can get a true measure. Because if you get every answer right, we have a hard time feeling confident in the score we give you because we never found something you couldn't do. So it would adapt up to try to find those challenges.
And we want to offer enrichment opportunities for those that are already stretched. You know, they're like, yeah, nailed that, check that box. Okay, so no, no, keep on going. And then, Kim Dahl, you said something, and I promise I wasn't daydreaming because it was so interesting. But can you tell me again what you were saying about the, it was on the assessment where you set up through like eighth grade, they had defined?
Yeah, so the fluency measures, the normative measures.
Thank you.
So they have normed those. In other words, they've done enough research to know that a student reading this number of words correct per minute in the fall at this age should be about this, right? They've done that work through eighth grade and the researchers. So ninth through 12th grade is still to be determined. They're still working on that research. We actually have been working with one of the lead researchers in that field, and he sent us some of their preliminary work so that we could give it a go. So that's what we've been doing.
So it's not FastBridge, it's?
Oral reading fluency. So FastBridge contains an oral reading fluency measure. And what that is, is a simple one-minute reading of a text. And you're tracking how accurate the students are, but also not, it's not speed. Like, we don't want them to read so fast that they can't understand it. What we want them to do is read at a comfortable rate. But if they're too slow, that's also taxing on their comprehension. So we've been using a different oral reading fluency. There's all kinds out there. And so we've been using a different one, but for K, through eighth grade, we will shift and just use the one that's built into FastBridge.
Good. Turnkey system is great if it's effective, right? And gives you what you need. And I want to give a shout out to Kim and Maggie. They did, Robbie and I went to Heritage Elementary and we got to see the third grade doing poetry and using adjectives. And it was amazing because it was ELL students. And thank you for that. It was the work just being done right on the spot. And I was very inspired. So thank you. And thank you entire team for what you're doing. It's great.
One last question, just want to double check. In the past, during registrations in July, parents who wanted to, almost 960 or so, opted their children out of certain parts of different testing because they were, and they could name them by platform, right? Maps or Mirror Panorama. Given that's a singular platform, when they do registrations for those who said, I didn't want to do Panorama, but didn't mind the math and reading, will they still have that functional option to opt out of My Sabers and still do the reading and math?
Yes, they will.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Kim.
Thank you. And Leeta, your comic was perfect.
Yeah, it's good to give them some applause. This is a nice job.
Thanks all for being here. So along with our FastBridge, tonight we have Kim Dahl. We have some amazing teachers, one specifically that I know pretty well, so I'm a little biased, Tanya Sims. And Maggie Richardson are here tonight to provide you with some background information on the units of study in writing. As Leeta mentioned, I know that you were able to witness some of that. But we also have proposed adopting of units of study of writing for kindergarten through eighth grade, writing instruction. We hope that this presentation will provide you with a quick overview of the resource and impact statements from staff and students who have implemented the program. And so tonight, along with Kim and Maggie, we brought a few staff members here that will share a little bit about their experience with it and the positive, and then share some other input from students. So I'm going to pass it over to Kim.
Good evening. We're really excited to share with you a resource that we plan to bring alongside all of the foundational skills work that our students have been doing as we strive to have a comprehensive literacy program here in Olathe. This resource would allow our students to extend and grow while also providing opportunities for application of those foundational skills. So just a quick overview of what a workshop framework is, and this is not necessarily specific to just this resource. It's kind of a model of instruction. There are three main parts. The first part is the mini lesson. This is where there's explicit instruction following an I do, we do, you do gradual release of the instruction model. The teaching points are clearly stated at the beginning of every lesson. And then there's ample opportunity for teacher modeling of what that skill looks like before kids practice either in a small group or partner while they're still here, give it a go on their own, and then go out to the work time. And the work time is really where we hit one of our big three with choice and engagement. Now granted, this is not a free-for-all choice, like you can just go do whatever. It's kind of controlled choice, but kids buy in a lot more when they get to make their decisions and be, and I think I heard that Heritage, they called it the captain of your own writing. Like, so when the kids can make those decisions, the teacher kept asking, the student would ask, do I have to do this? Can I do this? And she's like, well, you're the captain of your writing. What do you think you should do? And so that really improves the engagement and gets kids really involved. Another piece of the work time that's really critical is the individual conferring and small group time. This allows teachers to have a constant feedback loop with their students, which is one of the strongest effect sizes of evidence-based practices. Because they are constantly during that chunk of time, meeting with a small group, meeting with an individual, going over to another individual, and going around and meeting each student exactly where they are and taking, this is where you're at, this is the next step. This is where you're at, this is your next step. So it really provides that opportunity for differentiation and meeting the needs of all students, whether it be students who are going well beyond what the rest of their class is or students who are struggling and need some more foundational support. And then we always end the workshop with a share. And that's just kind of an opportunity to provide some authenticity to it. We're going to share with a partner, share with the whole group, so that we can celebrate what we did today. And that also provides a little bit of accountability. And this whole workshop time leads to an abundance of time spent actually writing. And I mean, that's what our kids need to be doing to improve, is increase their volume of reading and writing. And so you can see if they're spending 25 to 30 minutes engaged in actual writing, that only has positive effects.
So one of the things that we have centered in our quest to do better is the idea that our students experience a K-12 experience and that it's cohesive. And so when we started looking for resources, we were looking for a resource or resources that would provide a broader range of grade levels accessible in that resource to meet that expectation or that hope that we can provide a more consistent and cohesive experience, K-12. And so we were excited when we found units of study because it covers K-8, which then leads our students to be able to have a comprehensive cohesive writing experience from grades K through eight that cumulatively builds on itself year after year. Another piece that we're looking for when we look at resources is always the standards. Are we grounded in our state standards? And units of study fit this to a T, really hits strongly on the writing standards in particular, but also wrap in the reading and the speaking and listening. Part of our standards expect argument writing, informational and narrative writing to happen every year, even with our littles. And units of study provide that. And so every year, the student will have explicit instruction, argument writing, obviously, grade level appropriate, but then will grow the next year as a first grader. And I'm going to try again as an argument writer, and then as a second grader, and so on, as we build that up. Another piece that we look at, that's one of our big responsibilities, is to make sure that we're really up to date on research and evidence-based practices. And so when we went making sure that there were evidence, as we were looking at evidence-based practices, we found the CEDAR report. And it outlines the 10 evidence-based practices that you can see on the screen. That's actually spelled out even further. There's 34 evidence-based practices within that document. And as we were studying the evidence-based practices, again, with units of study, we were excited to find that units of study meets many, many of those. And another piece that we find really important as we're looking at resources is, does it fit our portrait of a graduate? And while we know that this document is teeny tiny for you to see, just the visual itself is pretty powerful. What we had the team do was look at the resource and say, okay, let's look at this against our portrait of a graduate. And how many of those competencies does it align to or does it highlight? And as you can see, just at a glance, what the top is, is what the team felt the competencies in each of those areas were highlighted in the units of study. And below the line is how it is actually manifested within the units of study and the workshop approach. So we've basically directly tied the resource to our portrait of a graduate, which I think is really exciting. The final piece that we always want is teacher feedback and student feedback and input. And I am not going to steal the thunder of the wonderful three ladies behind me because they're going to be able to speak to it far better than I can. So I'm going to turn it over to them.
Good evening. My name is Rachel Swerengen and I teach fifth grade at Manchester Park. Thank you for the opportunity this evening to talk to you about a, not just a resource, but a topic that I think all three of us, all three teachers would agree, we're very passionate about. And that's because we've seen the huge impact that this has had on our students. So I have notes that I'm going to read to make sure I don't talk all night because I really feel like I could do that about this. I was asked to share what workshop feels like from the teacher's perspective. I've been using it for the past four years since we started the pilot. But I don't think that you could probably really understand my perspective until you hear about and from my students. On our last day of school, so just last week, I asked my fifth graders, what are some of your best memories of fifth grade? And I want you to keep in mind that the day before, we'd gone to main event for our end-of-year field trip. So I kind of thought that might be a lot of their answers. But nearly half of them said writer's workshop. And that's not unique to this year. That would be true from all four years that I've done workshop. So I reflected on that. I mean, why is that one part of our day, what so many of the students would say is their favorite part of the year? Why do they love workshops so much? And speaking to the teacher perspective, I think that one of the reasons is because of the confidence that I've gained as a teacher of writing that just spills over into my students and the confidence that they have and the joy that they find in writing. Every lesson is geared towards that, not just growing your writers, but also growing you as a teacher of writing. Every part of the lesson, every part of the units, is like a little pocket of professional development. Every year you use it, you learn a little bit more that you can give to your students. For example, each daily lesson provides teachers with a sample script of the lesson so you can take the pieces that apply to your students. There's tips for modifications of the lesson to meet your students as writers where they are. So we can grow our struggling writers, but we can also enrich those that are ready for the next step. It also gives suggestions for small groups and one-on-one conferring that they use during their independent writing time. Like I said, I could talk to you about this for a long time. I've seen the impact that it's had on my students and you've heard from them. They love writing time. Hi there. Can you hear me? I am Tanya Sims and I teach sixth grade at Summit Trail. So I'm speaking to you today from a middle school perspective. We are a lab site school and all of the English Language Arts teachers at Summit Trail have been piloting the program for the past three years. So I would like to start by saying I found it to be an effective and an easy-to-use program. And I know that's extremely important for our teachers that we have something that's both valuable and sensitive to our time constraints. I know personally, I am a better teacher of writing and I am a better writer myself after using this program for the last three years. I'd like to highlight a couple of the components of the program that I have found most effective. And the first is the mini lessons. I found them to be so explicit and easy to follow. I really appreciate the I do, we do, you do format that was mentioned earlier because it allows me right during that mini lesson time to see my students who already have mastered this concept and need enrichment. And it also lets me see those students who still need time to work. I can quickly formulate groups right after that mini lesson and start a small group conference so students aren't left behind. They either have something more advanced to work on, something if they're confused, I can pull a small group of students who need that clarification and get them started. So I feel like it really goes from level to level. I also love the frequent check-ins and progress monitoring that we do in many different times. During the mini lessons, during those small groups, during those individual conferences. It helps me have a better understanding of where my students are and where they still need to go. And I'd also like to touch on a few of the celebrations that I've had with my students because I think that that is the best part of the program for me, is how it's impacted them. First off, there is huge growth in the quality and volume of writing that's done. And we know we've got to have students writing more. And we've seen this across content areas as well in the middle school. So my social studies and science teachers are saying that same thing to me. We see this in their assessments that we do and also in what students report. I did a survey of students at the end of the year this year, and I'll reference that a couple of times. I've also seen growth in their soft skills. What she was mentioning earlier about the portrait of the graduate, I had several teachers come in, since we are a lab site school and observed my teaching and the students interacting in a workshop model. And at the end of the lesson, they came to me and said, I am amazed at the academic vocabulary being used by sixth graders. I'm amazed by their ability to explain to us what the skill is that they're trying to master and also their ability to interact with one another and, you know, give feedback and receive feedback at that sixth grade level, which is something I know some adults even struggle to do appropriately at times. I also, a nice side benefit is that there are fewer behavior issues. Since there's only a 10-minute mini lesson, it's a quick lesson, kids are engaged, they're active and participating, and then it switches, and they're often working. And they have lots of resources to help them stay focused and successful. Students also are feeling empowered to make decisions about what their writing needs. One of my students wrote to me, it gives more power for the student. We get to have it the way we want it. And I think that's very powerful in a world where they don't always feel like they have a lot of choice. And when I'm not available to help, the students aren't stuck. They can use mentor texts, checklists, writing partners and anchor charts. And these are all things that are taught to our students on how to use those effectively when the teacher isn't available. And then also there's a huge growth in the confidence and attitude. Here are several comments I received. I never knew I could write like this. It got me more excited to write than the other things I have done in the past. It was way easier to learn when you do it yourself rather than being taught what to do and then later being expected to use a skill in your writing. And then finally, it helped me become more independent. I can do things on my own even if I couldn't. So those are some great celebrations.
Hello, I'm Emily Bai and I am a third grade teacher at Heritage. And I know some of you had the pleasure of coming to speak with some of my students. And I get to take on the topic of students specifically, which obviously is my favorite part of all of this program. I have a unique perspective in that I get to see a wide variety of students in my classroom, ranging from ELL students, those that we're offering enrichment to, and also those that need extra support. And I can honestly and truly say that this program reaches every single one of them on the level that they are at. It meets them where they are and then brings them further than even I think they could have anticipated. Specifically with ELL students, I've seen so much growth in students that are new to the country, that barely speak the language. And just the confidence and skills that they gain through this program is astonishing. They feel comfortable and confident. And because of that, they're able to make huge growth throughout the year. It also applies to those that need additional support. Those students that need some differentiation, a little additional instruction, have the opportunity to meet with teachers in individual conferencing or small groups. It provides the time for us to do that, which is the most critical thing, as you know, time in a classroom. And because of that, those students are then met where they are and they can move further. But beyond that, it does transfer over to other things. I've seen that the skills that they've gained in writer's workshop help them in social studies and reading and science all across the board. And because of that, we have better-rounded students and students that truly believe that they can and will achieve their goals. More importantly though, one of my favorite pieces of this is the opportunities for extension and enrichment for students. As you know, a lot of times, that's difficult to achieve. And this truly does, this program allows that at every step. And specifically, I always think of one student this year who could write to any teacher and at the end of the year chose to write her letter to me. And I was her teacher in third grade, so it'd been a few years since she had been there. And obviously pandemic and all these other things. She chose to write her letter to me and her letter specifically mentioned that in first semester of third grade, she and I had worked together to complete her extensive, and I mean extensive, report on Blobfish. And how that meant so much to her that I would have sat and read her entire, I can't remember how many page book, and that that was what stuck with her through all of her years at our school. So I truly and honestly can say to you as a teacher that has done this for three years that I'm a better teacher because of it. And our students are better equipped because they truly do believe that they are writers as they go through this program.
Thanks for letting Learning Services hog the show tonight. I just wanted to share that. Tara Payton could not be here tonight, but she, as an administrator, wanted to share her quick experience, like an experience with you.
Hi, greetings from Heritage Elementary School. I am Tara Payton, the current principal. And I am so sorry I can't be with you in person this evening, but I asked if I could send a quick video to share to some of the things that I have loved at the writer's workshop, units of study, resource that we have been using here at Heritage. And I would just start off by saying that teacher competence in teaching writing is inspiring. Once you get going in the program, it is easy to use and you're modeling such great writing skills and patterns for these students. The academic language that is used throughout the lessons is exactly what our kids need as a foundation moving into middle and then high school. We're keeping the language consistent. You'll hear, you know, second and third graders talking about thesis statements or the literary essay they wrote. Or today in third grade, kids were talking about metaphors and similes. So the academic language that will transfer with them as they move from elementary to middle and high is fantastic. I also love the way this resource, this units of study, how it really meets the various levels of learning we have in each classroom. That is one of our teachers' biggest struggles, right? Is that they have such a range of students in their class and how do you meet each of them in their place? And this program really allows them to do that because once you do that quick 10-minute mini lesson and get kids off to being writers, it allows you the opportunity to pull a small group back and really hone in on what skill they're lacking or what they're needing to have reinforced in their writing to then give them that in that small group setting. While my advanced writers might not even just be working on what we talked about today, but they're pulling in all the skills I've taught them all year and they are just flying along. And they are producing so many pieces of work. The volume of student writing has increased exponentially here, which is so exciting. And kids love to share. and kids love to share their writing with others, whether it's their peers, whether they're bringing up to the office to read it to me or my secretary. They love sharing, and that's one of the things that we get to do, is we get to celebrate our students as writers, and that is built into the fabric of Writers Workshop, is celebrating the successes of our students and having them be proud of what they're doing. And so I guess I would just end by letting you know that I feel like we've just really built a strong community of writers in our building, and it's a great place to be. I love being in classrooms during Writers Workshop time. All right, if you have any questions for me, please feel free to reach out. You can get my email online. Thanks.
So in addition to all that has been shared, I will tell you, I think back to the beginning of the school year and even my experience with units of writing, and Dr. Smith and I were actually, I don't know if she recalls, we were in one of our elementary buildings, and there was two young ladies sitting there. You talk about hitting every type of learner, and the young lady could not speak English. Spanish-speaking had only been in the country for a couple of weeks, but she was dying to share her story that she had written in Spanish while another one of her peers was translating for her. The story was about her transition to the United States, but it was a beautiful story written while her friend translated it to Dr. Smith. And I thought, not only are they getting the opportunity to write their story, but in addition, the leadership that we're giving and the opportunities that we're giving another student to take on that role and say, "I will translate. I will help support that," so that they feel a part of it. Because I'm sure it was an experience where I'm coming here, and everybody's writing in English, and I'm not, but yet she was able to write her story while her friend helped with that. So that was powerful to me. And I think the final piece that I will leave you with is, as an educator and as an instructional leader, I think anytime that you go into a building, or you go into a classroom, or even as a teacher, I've always referred to the Fundamental Five instructional model. And when you talk about the Fundamental Five, is that, you know, as educators, we're taught that we should frame the lesson. Framing the lesson means we want to put our objective in terms that students understand. Sometimes we call them "I can" statements, rather than "the student will be able to do this, I will be able to do this, or I can do this." The other piece is teaching in the proximity or the power zone, and that means I'm in the middle of it all as a teacher, because I want to know what's going on. I'm not teaching from my desk, I'm not teaching from a podium, I'm in the middle of it all. The other part is the frequent small group discussions, giving them 10 to 15 minutes so they have some purposeful discussion, the recognition and the reinforcement, the importance of doing that as a teacher. And then finally, writing critically, because we know that writing helps improve reading. And all of those Fundamental Five, when we did Units of Study, was it hit, Units of Study hits every aspect of the Fundamental Five, and in turn, fewer behavior issues, students are more engaged, add to them what they're writing is meaningful and purposeful, so therefore they want to do it. So that was just my spiel on it.
So we'll leave you with some more words out of the mouths of our students, or out of the pencils of our students on the screen, and we'll happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
A quick question for you. With so many new and prolific writers, do any of our elementary schools, not showing us bigger and certain, do they publish? You know, in the '70s, really dating myself, at my elementary school, writing was, I loved it, right? And so there was a chatterbox that'd come out in fall, and one in the spring, and so they would take our poems, or our haku, or things we're learning, or our stories, yes, those back in paper was cheap, and print those, and nothing made a kid or a parent happier than to say, "Look, there's some of the few things that my parents probably still have from the five of us kids. Do we do that in any of our schools? Do we support that? How do we do that so that they have something, right, that I did in third grade, and look, is my teacher's name, right, years later? I'm just kind of curious. I don't know."
Yeah, so at the end of each unit, they go through the entire writing process. So I might be starting and working on several different pieces in that genre, but at some point in the unit, I pick, "This is the one I'm committing to, and I'm going to revise it, and I'm going to edit it, and I'm going to look at it through a reader's eyes, and I'm going to make it the best I can make it." And then it's kind of more of a teacher decision as to how we publish it. Sometimes they might find it in a class book, sometimes they might just rewrite it very nicely on some nice paper, sometimes they might word process it. So they do have a product that they can show somebody and say, "This, this is something I did, and I took it from start to finish, and look how proud I am."
Because I know we have artwork all over the building, the district. I would like to think that maybe we could create some kind of avenue for some of those published pieces at different schools to rotate in and out, and so that those of us that come to the building can see and read those too, right? I mean, I think that would be pretty cool from a board member to be able to see what you all are producing with your kids and allow you all to share that with the public as well somehow, whether it's on, whether we tap Maggie and her team on the web, or however it gets out. But I would, I'd like to see that evolution of this interest and excitement become published.
I would say probably, as you spend time in our schools, you see different schools celebrating that in lots of different ways. Certainly, we can always look at other options, but you know, as I look at the teachers that are standing over there today, you know, they all find ways to celebrate writing with our kids, and gosh, I see it a lot when I'm in school. So I think probably, as you walk through schools, and I think you'll probably see more of it there than you might expect, that's out and displaying things like that. The other thing at the elementary level that we do is typically our spring conferences, our portfolio conferences, I don't know if that's what we still call them, but student-led conferences, where students really talk a lot about their learning and share their published works and things like that with their parents. And then the other thing that's happening a lot at elementary, and also at the other levels, but is seesaw, and students sharing the works that they're doing at school via seesaw with parents and things like that, people that have the links. So I think there's probably a lot of different ways that that's happening, and you know, our teachers are so good at, and I'm looking at three experts over here, I happen to know all of them, but who really do a nice job of celebrating those accomplishments, so. But again, we can always try to look for new and different ways. I always remember that, "Do you want to pay the $5 for the book of the class writing?" when I was in elementary school, so.
Well, and I could say, nobody knows how to celebrate success better than a teacher, so I believe you're already doing that. I have to really brag on Emily, because we are blessed to have her at Heritage, because she is bilingual, fluent in Spanish and English, and talk about making a difference in our community with our most vulnerable kids. Can you imagine not being able to speak English? And then all of a sudden, you have this amazing teacher who speaks your language and then teaches you the passion of writing and reading. I mean, it was so cool. Robbie and I got to see these little mini humans, you know, sitting around these tables going, "Well, have you thought of maybe putting this adjective in this sentence?" It was so adult-like, it was really surprising and really adorable, too, you know, because they just had learned how to interact on this respectful level, and they, it was massive, the amount of work they had done, and they were prolific writers, and we learned a lot. So thank you, and thank you, Emily, for bringing your skill set to us. We're better because of you.
Thank you, all of you, for the presentation. One thing I love so much is, by design, how we get to see Dr. G from our senior leadership team to our coordinators, that mid-level that's supporting our teachers, and then, of course, from our teachers. Anytime we get to hear from you all is just a treat for us, just to hear straight from the students and how things look for you. Words that caught my attention that I think are so important, empowerment for students, and that was from Summit Trail, right? I think you said that, like, what better opportunity for a middle schooler to feel empowered? Like, you know, I tell my, what, she just finished seventh grade, that that's a grade that not a woman on the planet wants to go back to, and you just conquered it. So if we're empowering middle schoolers, awesome. And then, you know, the kids love it, wow, that's a win. And then whoever said "effective and easy to use," you're so right. That is the marriage of the best thing, when you're, you know, the person on the ground doing the work with the kids, that when you have something that you know is effective, but it's also easy for you to use, and all of those layers in between that you all three described, so thank you for that. I am so thankful you guys are as passionate as you are about reading and writing, so thank you for sharing tonight.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. All right, on to action consent. Does anyone have any questions about 5.01 to 5.19?
I move to approve 5.01 to 5.19 as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Felter, second by Mr. Wickliff.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. President, could I add a comment? I promised Kim Doll I would say something, and I wanted to make sure I gave, before I didn't get, it was on the other page, so, where'd Kim go? Okay, I talked to Kim, and I told her I was going to call her out and say something nice, and I wanted to make sure that I did. One of the items we just approved was the update and revision of second-day core literature, and I wanted to make sure that I addressed that. I did have an opportunity to meet with several of the department heads at the high school level this week. Jessica Skogland had sent us an email and invited us to talk to them, so I did. And I was really, really excited to talk to them, because A, I'd read a bunch of those books, two, I read an enormous amount of that 48-page document your team shared with us. And I think it's important that, when I talked to Dr. Jaeger about it, he said, "This is not something that happened overnight. This is something that he's been working on for several years." In fact, two years officially, but from the teachers that I talked to, it's been something they've been working on for four to six years. Expanding, not replacing key texts that the kids read at various age groups from eighth, ninth, tenth, eleventh, and 12th. This is to expand and enlighten and engage more of our students in the population. And in talking to the teachers that I spoke to, I was, one, very, very happy that they were, they reached out, two, they answered every question I had, especially around some of the content, and they were very, very well-prepared, which made me really excited, because then I told them that. I said, "I'm going to talk about y'all tomorrow." The fact that they know the books and have studied the books and worked in groups with other instructors, and then had to interpret the books to be able to teach other teachers, because I asked them the question, "How are you going to roll this out? How are you going to ensure that every teacher knows what you know? What are you going to do?" And they're like, "Well, one of it was, we had to know them inside out from the rationale." So we were all, and it's published on the board docs for all the public to see, there was what they read, and the content, and the who, and the protagonists, and the rationale, and the thinking, and what I was shared with Jessica and Marty was that, what they shared with me was, in doing that, they had to step back and do a metacognitive process, like thinking of the thinking. What are the questions? How are we going to manage that? Is this an optional book? Is this a class study book? It didn't just happen in a small vacuum. It happened as an evolution of what really great teachers do for our kids. Many of the books that I've read, because I've had a kid that's graduated, one of them, one of the teachers I talked to was one of my kid's teachers, and I was like, "Well, remember when we did this? Remember when you came to the school?" The one thing that they were really adamant about is, they want us parents to be engaged in those books, to look at the lists when the teachers supply them. And if you would take the time to read it, and the rationale will be it when we approve, which we have just finished putting, gets put up, you'll get to see why. And if you particularly have a challenge with an individual book, there are alternative books, and they were even open to the idea of, if none of those books fit for you, for your kid, they want to engage. And that was something that's really important, especially today in our challenging school district area, is that our teachers want to engage, they want to help us understand. They're going to invite, I was told that a board member's are going to get invited, to be part of their reading programs at the high schools. Read with those high school kids the same books, have discussions. And Dr. Jaeger and I have talked a lot about, "How do we bring the adults and the parents back into the schools?" And I really, really was excited about that, Kim, is that they were able to say, "Well, and Kim told us about this, and Kim wants us to do this, and Kim..." And I was like, "That's really exciting, that they will then transfer that down to their teaching staff, and that will trickle down to the kids." So I wanted to make sure that I thank Marty and Jessica for the time, but also to thank you for the investment they gave me, the education they gave me. And I wanted to tell you, publicly call you out and say, "Thank you," because I can only imagine that's happening throughout the district, and that was really, really valuable, that we were invited to have that conversation. They were so passionate. Just to reach out, and Sarah, your team and all those folks that do all these things, the more we learn here, or the more I learn, the easier it is to advocate. So I invite anybody that wants me to read their books or see what they're doing, is they can reach out, because I want to engage. I was right with Robbie and the team yesterday, and I was thankful. Sitting in a parking lot at Sam's, and they were at school doing conference work, which I did not realize teachers were still working. They're still in summer conferences, and they're like, "Oh, yeah, we're still here working." So, but thank you, Dr. Jaeger, Dr. Guerrero, Kim, and all of your team. So I just want to make sure I put that in there, because Jessica and Marty said they were going to be watching. I said nice things, and I told you I would. So, but thank you for the time.
All right, on to action bids, contracts, agreements. Does anyone have any questions about 6.01 to 6.12?
I move to accept, let's see, I moved to pass, I'm sorry, I didn't get any sleep last night, I've got poison ivy. 6.01 to 6.12 as presented. Sorry.
Motion by Ms. Felter, second by Mr. Wickliff.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
All right, motion passes 7-0. On to actions others, we need to nominate somebody for the KASB nominating committee. This is a pretty easy gig. I think it's just one meeting.
It's one meeting a year.
And you're just part of a group that nominates the next, essentially the president-to-be of KASB, so, does anyone?
I nominate Julie Steele.
You willing to serve Julie?
It sounds like something I can handle.
I bet you'd be great.
Okay, so I guess we'll just do a motion. Can I get a motion to appoint Steele?
I move to appoint Julie Steele as representative from the LAH School District 233 Board of Education to the KASB nominating committee.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Connell, second by Mr. Wickliff.
Mrs. Felter?
Yes.
Mrs. Steele?
Yes.
Mr. Wickliff?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge?
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn?
Yes.
Mr. Connell?
Yes.
All right, motion passes 7-0. All right, on to 7-2, 7.02. Leeta, you want to just explain kind of what you were thinking, and we can go from there?
Yeah, I would just like to get a subcommittee together this month to work on a recommendation to bring to the Board of Ed next month about our public comment format.
Second.
So I guess, motion by Ms. Felter, second by Mr. Wickliff, but we'll need to decide how we're going to select that.
We have standing committees. Dr. Jaeger, is there a logic?
Would there be a committee that's appropriate for this, that fits into those four categories? Sorry to put you on the spot.
That's why I carry this big orange folder to all my meetings. There's a couple of them that I think may make sense. The Community Engagement Committee potentially is one. The other one is Potentially Effective Systems. Those are the two that I would probably say have some connection, if you will, to that. Probably more the Community Engagement Committee.
What we could do is assign it to the Community Engagement Committee. They can craft a recommendation, and then at the next meeting, we can have discussion and dissent our agreement and present it.
And I think that would give us time with some guidance from that committee to maybe try to work it into policy language that's doable, manageable, those kinds of things that, you know, we could have some of that ready to go to, which would be positive, probably.
That's great.
Okay.
Dr. Jaeger, can you share who's on that committee?
The people currently on that committee is Mrs. Felter, Mr. Kuhn, and Mr. Connell.
So, Sunshine, Barbara, will you get a meeting scheduled for us, and then we will, and we will have a recommendation to present at the next meeting?
And Maggie's the lead on that committee, so she can be in charge.
Okay.
Just making sure you're still listening.
Okay.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, let's.
Okay, so we got a motion by Mr. or, yeah, Miss Felter, say goodbye.
Oh, yeah.
You, Mr. Wickliffe, all right.
Are we ready then?
Yep.
Mr. Connell.
Yes.
Mrs. Felter.
Yes.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe.
Yes.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge.
Yes.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and we have a plethora of future action items there for us, 29 of them. As we get into summer, no written information, and we are on to topics of discussion for the board.
Can I ask, the Head Start report, I just noticed, I love the look of that, it's missing, is it just?
We did not receive one this month?
Okay, maybe we'll have two next month, because they do amazing work, thank you.
All right, any board comments?
Just a question for you before, there, in the future items, already is an item for board policy updates. Is the goal of the committee to recommend and add to that, since it's already a future item, so that we would meet and establish that and discuss it in that category? I'm just checking, it's not already there?
I believe it is.
No, it's.
Different policy.
Two different things.
Two different things.
I, I think based on the fact that this is an issue that we've talked about every month, I think it warrants having a separate conversation related to it specifically.
I would like for board comments, I would just like to thank our Olathe Police Department members here, our law enforcement crew for always showing up and keeping us safe. And we appreciate you, and you guys have worked really hard over the past month, and we appreciate your service. And Dr. Areola, you're here visiting us, you don't come bearing bad news, do you? We are, we have a famous gentleman here, I can't even say how famous you are. Thank you for your service to our community during the pandemic, we are honored to have you here. Can I have your autograph? And then.
I'm guessing he would prefer not to be famous.
Hey, we feel your pain, we feel your pain. I gotta brag on our Olathe firefighters. They formed a charitable foundation called the Olathe Firefighter Outreach. Those guys, they're just young on fire and they're making a difference. They bought like 320 brand-new coats for our kids, they're just boots on the ground, real deal. They bought an oven for posibilities, the Inclusion Connection Team. And they're just quietly making a difference in our community, so they got these really cool flyers, and so if anybody wants one, I'll put a little stack out there. If you guys wanna plug in and make a difference, do it with the Olathe Firefighter Outreach, they're amazing. And thank you, guys, it's an honor to serve the SAD.
Anything else?
I'll just quickly say, um, thank you for being here, it's strange not to have Andy sitting over there, but we sure are glad you're here, so, thank you. With his retirement, that was exciting for him. I don't know if you follow him on Twitter, but he did a sports number for the countdown till his retirement, so he would highlight somebody that wore that number on their jersey. So it was pretty fun to follow him right up too, so. Ideas for way down the road, because you look really young. Anyway, what I, I really was so unprepared for what the month of May really looked like being a board member, but what joy to be a part of graduations. I really, that is just, talk about cut-filling, it's kind of a secret you guys all know about, and I, you know, got to be a part of that this year, so that was pure joy. We have amazing students who are graduating from this district, and that is just so exciting. So I, I was at East and then Northwest, and one thing I didn't realize, and also Olathe Virtual School, and what a fun young lady that gave their address to her class. And she was really gracious at the end and said, "We are the biggest, the best, the smartest, and the only graduating class of OBS." And so I thought that was really, you know, a gracious way for her to, to handle something that's really been painful for all of us. One thing I didn't know, I've only been to my own graduation at OHS back in the day, and then my kids graduated from ONW. And, and I didn't realize the, um, the different, I wanna say like traditions with each high school's graduations. They all get the job done, but they all have their own flavor. I love that we do that in Olathe, it's really great. And I think that, you know, you kind of grow up in a high school and you might go to your friends a year or two above you, and it gets you excited for what your graduation's gonna look like. And it's very traditional to that school, so that was a really fun thing to see too, so. And just a shout-out to teachers, you, the teachers in this district are the ones that get those kids across the finish line. I know there were some after-school, late-night appointments that were trying to get that done. So to the teachers, my graduating cap is off to you, so, thank you, that's all.
I have to say Julie's a natural, she just soaked it all in, and at one point, we almost got in a wrestling match over one of our favorite students. We co-handed her. We did, we put our hands on it, we were like, "She worked it out." It was fun.
Anyone else?
So, if I could.
Yeah, come on.
So, a reminder to everybody that the negotiations are open, that of those negotiations between the ONEA and the district, the ONEA representing all of the certified staff, whether you're in the union or not, they represent that conversation. And so, I know they've had more and less of different meetings, I've been to three and I missed a couple, so I apologize, but very enlightening. Recognition of that it's a struggle, because you've got two big groups, you've got the district and you've got teachers all trying to figure out a way to work together. I would compliment them as a group, they seem to be getting along fairly well. And they're, they're talking to each other and trying to make progress together. But it is, they are open, I'm not sure exactly what dates they set during the summer, but May 31st was the last one. But it is important that if you want to know, and you want to support the district or support the teachers, come to these and hear them and listen and mind what's important to them. That's, that's, that's the best way to really know what's going on. I can, I've talked to some of them, and it was like, wow, it's a struggle, but it's a struggle because they both want the best outcomes that are available. I wanna remind everybody that that, those are important to come to, from the staff as well. I also did get to go to some graduations, so Julie and I both got to do the Olathe Virtual School. Truly a treasure, those people, those teachers, the families. I will say it out loud, I've told Dr. Jaeger that somehow, some way, that truly is a hybrid version of that, is the future of education, it's a matter of when. And I have talked to local legislators, I have talked to Dr. Jaeger, and it's like, somehow, some way, we're gonna find a way to fund that appropriately, so that those, you know, one girl that had open-heart surgery scar all the way down, you know, that's someone who was at risk that needed what that school did for her. Or the keynote speaker talking about how her life began and all through it. Those are special people and the teachers that were there, so I, I'm gonna throw it out now, because I've already told Dr. Jaeger, somehow, some way, before I finish my time on this board, we're gonna figure out how to make it possible for the greatest and best ways to learn to be available to every and all students. That's, that's my core focus for the next couple of years that I've told Dr. Jaeger about. But Olathe North, one of the things they did, that I wanna just call out for the folks at Olathe North in particular, they're Olathe North and Olathe South. One of their special ways that Julie mentioned to celebrate was that they had the flags of the home countries of origin. And I'm telling you, when those people flooded, it wasn't just the students, their families and the, and the dozens ran to get their pictures taken with their home country flag and the American flag together. Really special, is one of those things where I was like, "Hey, y'all, I'll go get in that picture and I'll take it." And it started with three, then there's 13, there's 30, and I wanna tell you, the graduation was truly an amazing experience. The folks that facilitated that, the ease at which things happened, tremendous. And Albert did tear up when he hugged and congratulated his own daughter, so, but he pulled it back together in 13 seconds. He was like, "I'm not crying." So I wanted to bring that up, thank you to Chick-fil-A for feeding us tonight, because my blood sugar's a little low. Last thing is, there's an elephant in the room, safety and security. It's a huge subject for all of us, we have been talking about it. It wasn't an agenda item per se this evening, it is part of the future items. I can tell you that Mr. Keiger and his team have been working for a long, long time, it's not just something that came up. And with our SROs, we care about the educational and the physical protection of all of our children. So some of those emails that think that we don't, I want y'all to know that we all do, we are actively working on it, it is a future item, it will be part of our conversations. We're taking a whole community look at what, what it means to take care of these kids and keep them safe. So, you know, stay tuned, I've been excited about some of the items that Brett and the team and Mr. Keiger brought to the conversation. So please keep coming to these meetings, keep paying attention, watch online, because I know we're gonna do what we need to do to take care of kids. But those are my thoughts.
All right, Dr. Jaeger.
All right, I'll try to go kind of quick, graduation, of course, as well. You know, as I sat through all the graduations and shook about 2,500 hands over that weekend, it's hard not to be totally impressed by the work that our staff with the support of our community does in this district, from the day kids walk in as preschoolers or kindergartners or to whenever they join us. Boy, our, our staff does amazing work with our kids, and so many of our kids, the potential that you see in them, even as they come across the stage and shake your hand, and the conversations and those kinds of things, so really a special thing. You know, one of the things that sometimes happens is people think school districts close for the summer, and not much goes on in the summer, which could not be farther from the truth. Our Operations Service Center staff led by Travis Pelangi, maintaining our 6 million square feet of buildings and our thousands of acres and all those things, boy, they're jumping into action like nobody's business right now to take care of the investment that our community has made in our schools and our districts. So I just want to thank them for their amazing work as well. Also, this week, we have summer conference, summer conference has been in place in our district for tons and tons of years, I don't know the exact number, but a very long time. And essentially what we do every summer is we hold our own professional conference. So our staff members give presentations to one another to share their expertise. We have sometimes a couple of national people come and share their expertise, but it really is three days' worth of amazing Olathe-eyed learning. That's really about helping our staff be the best they can be at their craft. Our staff does that without pay, we have hundreds and hundreds of them there, usually we get nearly 1,000 people at the conference. And that's staff members that are choosing to spend almost their first three days of summer continuing on the journey to learn and support our kids. So tremendous effort by Jenna Cooter and our Learning Services staff to make summer conference happen, and it's happening this week as well, so it's a, it's a great thing. Also, next week starts Extended School Year, our summer school, if you will, for students with special education supports. That happens starting next week, and we will welcome kiddos who, it's really important to maintain their levels of performance, that we spend some time with them over the summer, so that will start. I also wanna remind our community that on our Learning Services website, we have a site called Level Up, and those are standards-based activities and resources that families can utilize over the summer, if their students are not participating in one of the many summer programs that our community or our district offers. Also, our high schools are working this summer on credit recovery, so that's for our kids who were a little worried about where they are in terms of their, their standing for graduation. Our high schools are, are working on that right now this summer as well. Also, next week, our mental health clinic opens, you've probably seen a lot of the great social media promotion, actually even some media, media promotion on Kansas City news outlets about that, where we'll have individual counseling sessions, group sessions, family therapy, parent support groups, OPS staff wellness groups, a lot of different things happening to support our community this summer that way. And also, certainly, we'd be remiss without thanking our Olathe Public Schools Foundation for their tremendous investment in that work each summer and all that we do to try to keep our, our students, our staff, and our families mentally healthy here in our district, so a great big thank you to them. Also, next week starts our free summer meal service at Northview, Ridgeview, Westview, and Santa Fe Trail. That's a free lunch from anybody that's one years old to 18 years of age, from 11:30 to 1 o'clock each of those days, starting next week as well. That's part of the federal food program, summer, summer programs, so we're pleased to be able to offer that to the community as well. So I have lots and lots of people doing lots of things to support our community this summer and our students, even though school is out for the summer. I also, just tonight, wanna take a minute to recognize Sharon Morris. Sharon is here tonight, Sharon, why don't you stand up? You know, earlier when you talked about Dr. Areola not wanting to be famous, I quickly thought about Sharon and thought, she, she might feel the same way. But, gosh, you know, Sharon has been such a, such a professional and an amazing student health advocate, family advocate, cared so much about our district and our schools and our students and our staff, long before the pandemic started. But the pandemic, obviously, was where folks really got to know Sharon, and mostly in positive ways, right, Sharon? But she has done an amazing job and has worked tirelessly, and I just wanted to take a minute to thank her, as this will be her last board meeting before she retires. So Sharon, we think the role of you and wish you nothing but the best in, in the future, and are so appreciative of everything you've done for our community and our school district, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
That concludes my comments, did we clap to Sharon? We did, didn't we?
All right, and how much time will we leave for that first executive session?
Let's start with 20 minutes.
All right, can I get a motion for the first executive session?
I move that we adjourn to executive session for 20 minutes.
Second.
Yeah, I think we actually need to move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of consultation with an attorney for the body or agency, pursuant to the exception for matters which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship under coma, and that the board return to the regular meeting at 8:35 in this room.
Second.
Thank you.
Hi, Mr. Wickliffe, say goodbye to Mr., is it Mr. Boyd?
Yeah.
Mr. Kuhn.
Yes.
Mr. Connell.
Yes.
Mrs. Felter.
Yes.
Mrs. Steele.
Yes.
Mr. Wickliffe.
Yes.
Mr. Boyd.
Yes.
Mr. Beveridge.
Yes. Motion passed at 7:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing individual personal performance pursuant to not elected personnel exception under coma and that the board return to the regular meeting at 9:25. Is that right?
Yep.
9:25 PM in this room.
Yes.
Motion by me, second by Mr. Boyd. On favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thanks, Paulson.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move that the board adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing individual or personal performance pursuant to not elected personnel, exception under coma, and that the board return to the regular meeting at 9:25, is that right?
Yep.
9:25 PM in this room.
Second.
Motion by me, second by Mr. Boyd, on favor.
Aye.
Alright.
Thanks, Paulson.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barry Young.
...